Welcome, everybody. I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the FinCom public hearing on April 30th, 2024, at 7:01. Can you all please stand for the pledge? Pledge allegiance?
To the God of the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to kick off the meeting by welcoming our town moderator, Jackie Lima. Welcome, Jackie.
Could I just open our session?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a forum of the Capitol Committee here, so Pierre Cruz on the chair, we have Jennifer Kill, Vice Chair, we have Jason Malley, who's here, we have Steve Tringalli, and we have Helga Littke. So we have a well-represented, and we'll be taking some votes on the, any articles dealing with stabilization votes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Did you open your public hearing?
I did.
Your meeting and your public hearing?
Public hearing.
Okay, excellent.
Glad to come up. Next slide. I'm Tim.
All right. Perfect. So thank you, everybody, for inviting me. This is gonna sound very reminiscent of when I sat in front of the Board of Selectmen a week or two ago, but different audience, hopefully trying to capture as many people as we can. Just introducing myself, Jackie Lima, I am the elected town moderator, and one of the tasks that I have is to oversee the proceedings at our annual town meeting. So I appreciate time tonight, just to remind those present, or anybody who's watching the meeting, about a few important things that will happen at our annual town meeting. The town's bylaws state that we must hold a town meeting at 7:00 PM on the second Monday in May annually, so that the town can conduct its annual business. This year, our annual town meeting will take place on Monday, May 13th, 7:00 PM, at the Millville Elementary School. We'd like to begin the meeting on time, and need to have a quorum of 40 registered voters present and checked in, arriving prior to 7:00 PM, so that you can get checked in by the clerk and take your seat, is greatly appreciated. There are no plans at this time for a special town meeting prior to the annual, so we'd like to begin promptly at 7:00 PM. There'll be handouts made available. I did email out to anyone who's sponsoring an article that wishes to pass something out at the annual town meeting, supporting their article. Please email the materials to moderator@millvilleMA.org, no later than Friday, May 10th, for review and approval, so that we can get them printed and brought to the meeting. I do have a couple of things in my inbox from BMR, who's always good about it, and BBT as well, but anybody else sponsoring an article, please let me know. This year, we'll have 21 articles to vote on, including the budget, so again, I'm pleased to see that there are a lot of people here this evening, but anybody watching, please know that the warrant is available online. Town meeting is not the time to start learning about what you're being asked to vote on, so please take the time to do your homework, read through the warrant, and understand the budget ahead of the meeting. And finally, as I do every time I address anyone, our finance committee and capital planning committees are in desperate need of volunteers. Without folks on these boards, the town cannot operate, so if anybody has any time or interest in serving on one of the important boards, please reach out, moderator@millvilleMA.org, and I'd be happy to consider appointments. Thank you, three. I know being short on a board can be tricky, you take on a little bit more tasks. Claudette, I know you've been trying to get up to speed as the chair, so I want to thank each of you for your time that you've put in for this budget season, and unless anybody else has any questions, I'll let you guys proceed to the hearing.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Okay. So, next slide, Tim. Now I would like to touch on the budget process. In January, how it all happens. So in January, the town administrator sends out a letter of guidance to the department heads, and then between January and March, there is a good amount of back and forth with the department heads and the town administrator. Then the department heads send their budget requests into the town administrator. Then in March, he puts together an initial draft of the budget, and he sends it out to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Then between March and April, there's meetings with various departments and school department heads. The TA will do revisions to the budget based on these meetings and also the needs of the departments. He then presents it to the Board of Selectmen in the FinCom. The Board of Selectmen votes on the budget, which they did on April 22nd. Then FinCom looks at the budget and holds a public hearing, which is tonight, which allows us to discuss the budget at hand and make our recommendations. Next slide, Tim. In terms of the guidance that Peter sent out this year, there was roughly $150,000 that we get an automatic two-and-a-half increase in the amount we can tax the town each year. So that is kind of the baseline that Peter includes in his guidance, or included in his guidance. The non-union departments, as you can see, are 3% salary and level-funded expenses. The public safety, 3% salary increases in level-funded operating expenses. All schools at 3%. Health benefits, it is what it is. Retirement is identified by the City of Worcester. The debt service is what it is, and insurance is the actual cost. Then there's exceptions to the guidance that are considered, with proper support and justification from the department heads. As we go through the budget, you will see that some of the departments were increased, and there are hard copies if anyone needs a copy of the budget. Does anybody need a copy? Are you all set? Because I have more. Do you need another one, Joe? Here.
More?
Yeah, have more. Yeah?
I'll take them all.
Here. How's that?
I think I have the right one, but yeah, give me one, just in case.
I'll take one of this.
Right there. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right. So I mean, my next slide, in terms of revenue this year, we have a total of $7,416,042. That consists of $595,398 in state aid, $777,000 in local receipts, $55,900 from other funding, and $5,987 in 743 in property taxes, which is the largest chunk of revenue, leaving a total of $7,416,042. Okay, Tim. We have five stabilization accounts, which include OPEB stabilization, general stabilization, a capital stabilization account, a public safety stabilization account, and what you see here are the totals in the account as of April. You will see the OPEB at $194,391, general stabilization at $950,651, capital is at $206,282, and highway is at $125,000, and public safety is at $163,187. And I'll just note...
Highway's at 80. You haven't made the 45.
Well, I was just gonna, I was just gonna make a note. So, the note is that the highway stabilization is an article that'll be voted on tonight. Whether it gets voted on or not could potentially change the balance to $125,000. Right. Okay. All right, Tim. All right. So, this current recommended Board of Selectmen budget included all expenditures is $7,634,369, which leaves a deficit of $218,327, which is really not what we want, right? This year has been challenging with increases of operational costs, contractual obligations, and of course, in the state contributions. This is not a good thing for the town. We will be covering this deficit from free cash, essentially. Okay. So what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna, I'm gonna read through the warrant, one article at a time. I'm gonna open it up for discussion for the public, and then when the questions and comments are, if you have any questions or comments on the warrant, when you're done, I'm going to talk with the board, and we're gonna make our votes as we go through. Okay? All right. Tim, warrant number one. Tim?
I'm working on it.
Oh, all right. I can't stand these glasses. So, Article number one, monetary increases. To see if the town will vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items, as recommended by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting, shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of the funding as being from available free cash or the line item, article, or other funding sources that will reduce by the same amount, or take any other action in relation thereto. This article is a standard article. If anybody's recommending to move money, they just need to know where they're getting the money from, so you must indicate that. Does anybody on the floor have any questions or want to discuss? Okay. Helga? Sierra? Okay. So if, you know, what I'll be looking for is a motion to...
Make a motion?
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Helga?
I like.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion passes. Okay. So Article two, bills of prior fiscal year. To see if the town will vote pursuant to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds such sums of money necessary for the purpose of paying outstanding bills from prior fiscal year, and/or take any other action relative thereto. This article gives approval to pay our outstanding bills from the prior year. At this time, I don't believe we have any bills, so I'll be looking for a motion. If there's no questions on the floor, I'll be looking for a motion to recommend.
Make a motion?
Article...
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Helga?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Article number three, snow and ice deficit. To see if the town will vote to transfer and appropriate a sum of monies from the free cash or available funds to fund deficits incurred with the snow and ice budget per MGL, Chapter 44, Section 31D, or take any other action in relative thereto. This is, this article is to pay the balance owed from snow and ice removal above the $80,000 that's budgeted. Right now, at this time, the printing amount is $48,644.72. So if there's no questions on the floor...
I'll make a motion?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Sierra?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Article four, highway department, Chapter...
Just to clarify, these are motions to recommend, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Let's, we just want to make sure that we're saying we want a motion to recommend.
A motion to recommend. Okay? Okay. Thank you, Jackie.
Unless you don't want to recommend it, let's say don't recommend.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, Article four, highway department, Chapter 90. To see if the town will vote to accept and expend such sum of money, sums of money allotted or to be allotted to the town from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of MGL, Chapter 90, or under any other state roadway reimbursement programs for fiscal year 2025, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a contract or contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Highway Division for such purposes, and further to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow in anticipation of 100% reimbursement of said amounts, or to take any other actions relative thereto. This is allowing the town to accept and spend state money for our roads. If there's no questions from the floor, are there any questions from the board? Okay. So I'll be looking for a motion to recommend.
I'll make a motion to recommend.
I'll second.
All in favor? Helga?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Article five, cable license fees. To see if the town will transfer from the PEG Access and Cable-related Funds Account the sum of $7,500 to forward to the Superintendent of Schools of the Blackstone Millville Regional District for use by the Director of Library and Media Services to enhance the curriculum offerings that are available in the school district, or take any other action in relative This money, this is the money we get from Charter every year, that we forward $7,500, it would be $7,500 to BMR for cable, and Blackstone does the same. If there's no questions, I will be looking for a motion to...
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Article number six, highway and bridge stabilization fund. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds the sum of money to the highway and bridge stabilization fund, or to take any other action relative thereto. The explanation is to move, so this article allows for future strategic funding of roadway and bridge projects, which have previously been funded out of the operational budget and is part of the town's continuing goal to manage a capital plan, and in order to address the numerous roadway and bridge capital improvement projects and equipment which exceed the operating budget. So I put, I support the, are there any questions on the floor? And if there's no questions... Peter?
Just to recommend that you let Capital take its vote before you guys do, okay?
Oh, okay.
If that's all right, and that helps inform your vote, because I think under the bylaws, we're in part recommending to you when we do a recommendation.
Okay. So you're gonna go, you're gonna go ahead?
So I think the plan, the Board of Selectmen recommended $45,000. I think you're showing that out of free cash would move to stable, this stabilization fund, and based on any potential actions further, I think there's plenty of money in free cash to allot from the 45 grand. So I would take a motion to recommend that the, this article be done, under the assumption that 45 grand would be moved in at town meeting, under the town meeting motion.
So moved.
Hang on a second. Any further discussion among the Capital Committee? All right? Well, think of, just, the votes in? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So you have a 5/0 recommendation from Capital on that one.
Okay. So I'll be looking for a motion to recommend to move $45,000 from free cash into stabilization for future use to fix our roads and our bridges.
I'll make another recommendation to move.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So Article seven, capital stabilization fund. To see if the town will vote to transfer from any available funds a sum of money to the capital stabilization fund, or take any other action relative thereto. Let's see. I do believe this article will be struck on the floor, as there are no funds going into it. If there were funds, FinCom would support the funding for this article.
Yep. So the Board of Selectmen recommended this. They included it in the warrant, it's a classic warrant item, and they voted to recommend it. For the Capital Committee, our movement would be that we're recommending that nothing be put into it at this stage, because Capital has guidance of about 200,000 should be in there, and we're at 206, so we're basically happy with that. So I think our recommendation is, will ultimately be a motion at town meeting of no action on this article, but for us, we're recommending to put nothing into it. So I'll take a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion that we do not need to, that we don't fund the capital stabilization fund.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yes.
Can Peter go to the table? Because I watch these meetings every time recorded at home, and when people talk from the audience, I can't hear them, and Peter has important stuff to say tonight, so my point of order would be...
Please?
Yes! It's like having multiple mothers here. I don't know.
Frequent wire on Tim's channel.
Yeah. Gee, Wes.
Okay. So I need to, so I need to still look for a motion on this, just...
You do.
We do.
Yes.
I make a motion to recommend not to fund further the capital stabilization fund.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
An aye. Okay. Okay. So Article eight, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be skipping Article eight, and I'm gonna go to Article nine, which is fund other post-employment benefits, OPEB. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from any available funds a sum of money to the OPEB Liability Trust Fund for the purpose of reducing the unfunded territorial liability of health care and other post-employment benefits of retired, retired employees, or take any other action in relative thereto. So, the Board of Health is recommending to strike this article on the floor, because the current OPEB balance is close to our outstanding commitment. Any discussion?
Just for clarity, it's a take no action on it. It's not that they're striking the article, they're just recommending, the motion would be a town meeting to take no action, and the reason is it's pretty well-funded at this stage, and you'll see that we have $194,000 in the stabilization account, and there's $242,000 is the outstanding liability. Prior to that, it had been reported in the 600-grand range, but a revaluation by the actuaries came up with a 242 is the latest, as of 6/30/23, that will be in the explanation there.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm looking for a vote to take no action.
I make a recommendation to take no action.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. So Article number 10, fiscal year 2025 budget. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be skipping this article too at this point, I'm gonna go through to Article number 11, which is BMR, other post-employment benefits. To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $25,700 into other post-employment benefits Liability Trust Fund, the OPEB Fund of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, established under General Laws, Chapter 32B, Section 20, said funds to be used only to pay some portion of health benefits for retirees from the Blackstone Millville Regional School District, or take any other action relative If the budget is approved, there is no action needed on this article. If this is not funded, the budget, we would want to recommend this article. Am I saying that right, Peter?
Correct.
Okay. So looking for a motion to recommend.
I make a motion to recommend.
Second? Do second.
I will second, yeah.
All right. Any questions? I'll be looking for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Article 12, BMR School Committee's stipends. To see if the town will vote to authorize the members of the Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee to be compensated for their services as such members, and to set the amount of said compensation at $1,500 per member, $1,800 for the chairman, such compensation to be paid in three equal installments in the month of July, November, and March, provided, however, that no such installment shall be paid to a member who is not in attendance of at least 60% of the meetings of the District School Committee, excluding, however, any meetings not attended by such members due to the provision of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, in the 12-month period prior to July 1st, November 1st, or March 1st, as the case may be, if such a member has been a member for 12 months or more months prior to each of said dates, or B, to a member who is not, who is not attend at least 60% of the meetings of the School District Committee, excluding, however, any meeting not attended by such member due to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 268A, in the prior, in the period prior to each of the said dates, or take any other action in relative thereto. So, this is, this is to pay the school committee the stipends. I support the BO, the Board of Selectmen's recommendation to not pay the stipends for the Blackstone Millville School Committee. So are there any questions on the floor? Do you guys have any questions on this?
Clear. So I make a recommendation to not fund.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Article 13, cable appropriations. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $37,500 from the PEG Access and Cable Fund available fund balance to fund the cable operations for fiscal year 2025, starting July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025, under the direction of the cable coordinator, said funds to be spent on professional wages in the amount of $20,000, part-time wages $2,500, and expenses $15,000. I support the Board of Selectmen to spend money from our PEG Cable Fund to pay for the town's cable needs. Any questions from the floor? Any questions from Finance?
Clear.
Okay?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
I'll second.
All in favor? Helga?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. All right. So Article number 14 is non-financial, so we're gonna pass through Article 14. We're gonna go on to Article 15, BBT warrant item. To see if the town will vote to approve $10 million, $10 million debt authorized by the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional District School Committee on February 14th, 15th, 2024, and amend by its actions of March 14th, 2024, to pay costs of roof reconstruction and the replacement to energy-efficient rooftop HVAC units at the Blackstone Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School, located at 65 Pleasant Street in Upton, Mass., including the payments of all costs incidental or relative thereto, or to take any other action relative thereto. Such debt approved by the town to be contingent upon the district's ability to secure grant approval from the Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerated Repair Program. So, this warrant article, we currently have a debt with BBT that's going to go away, and this roof project will replace it, which would not increase the budget. There's a potential for MSBA reimbursement with this as well. Are there any questions on the floor? Okay. Any questions?
No. Capital first.
Yep.
Correct. Thank you. Yes. So I'll take a motion to recommend this article from Capital.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm gonna skip...
No, now we got...
We get it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So... Oh, right, because I was...
So if there's no further discussion, then I'll make a recommendation to fund this.
Article number 15.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Gonna skip through 16. 17, zoning bylaws, there's no financial impact. 18...
21 is the next.
Thank you. Article 21. To see if the town will vote to amend the town bylaw, Chapter 20, Section 20-8, decompensation system by replacing the existing classification and compensation plan effective July 1st, 2023, with the following classification and compensation plan effective July 1st, 2024, as follows, or take any other action thereto. So the... So the, the explanation of the article is this is adjusting the pay ranges for the town positions. I am, I am in support with the Board of Selectmen's recommendation to support this article. Are there any questions from the floor? If not...
I'll make a recom- motion to recommend this article.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. So that is that. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go back to Article ten, which is the budget. You all have your copies? Okay. We're gonna walk through the budget. And anyone who wants to discuss a department line, um, I want, please say hold. We'll discuss, um, we'll discuss it on the hold, okay? So, I'm gonna start with... The town, oh gosh, this is all messed up.
Do you have a newspaper?
Nope, there it is. So the town, the town moderator, um, there's no, no dollars. Board of Selectmen, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Town Administrator, eighty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Finance Committee, a hundred and fifty dollars. Finance Committee Reserved Fund, twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. Town Accountant, fifty-five thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars. Town Audit, twenty-four thousand dollars. Board of Assessors, sixty thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. Treasurer Collector, one hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars. Legal, forty thousand dollars. Technology, thirty-five thousand dollars. Town Clerk, seventy-one thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars. Conservation Commission, nine hundred dollars. Planning Board in Zoning, seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Town Hall, old and new building, one hundred and sixty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Annual Report, five hundred dollars. Police Department, six hundred and ninety thousand five hundred and eight dollars. Fire Department, three hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars.
Hold.
Okay. Okay, so, do you wanna come to the table and speak on your hold?
This side now. Does anybody have a copy of this?
They have copies.
This one page?
The one page?
Anybody in the audience wanna copy this one page?
I have some, some actual ones we're taking.
Hey, welcome.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
So, based on, uh, the budget and what came out as the recommendation, uh, we'd be looking to ask for an additional thirty thousand. And if you can see from the, the sheet, the, the one-page sheet we had printed out, under the, the line items that we have there, uh, the one that, the, the priority would be for, um, the line item for, uh, part-time line item.
So five-one-two-o?
Five-one-twenty.
Yep.
So we'd like to fund that to the one-fourty-six-three-oh-one to be able to give us, to be, to allow the fire department to cover every EMS shift not covered by full-time staff. So the way it is right now, um, the budget would not be funded to cover the expected shifts, amount of shifts that are not covered by our full-time staff. So, if the ambulance covered for every call shift, we, we're not gonna have enough money to pay them. So we'd like to have at least enough money in that line item to be able to do that.
Yeah, that's, that's twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think we're looking for, what, thirty, Peter?
Yeah.
This is for fiscal year twenty-five?
No.
It's not?
No, it's...
It's twen-
That pertains to...
It's firefighter, EMT, part-time wages. Right now, the Board of Rec- Board of Selectmen have one-twenty-six-oh-ninety.
Here it is.
Yep.
And they're looking for one-fourty-six-three-oh-one for that line item.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? So that's a twenty, twenty and change.
One thousand.
Yep.
And, and I think you're also looking for a couple of grand on the full-time line.
Yep.
And some money on the overtime.
Correct, yes.
And that's after some extensive, and I observed, 'cause I sat there and listened in, and they let me talk too, which, I talk too much, sorry. But the, the Public Safety Committee has been meeting quite frequently at trying to address these issues to ensure there's c- coverage and still work within the town's means. And this extra thirty seems to get them very far along the process, at least for the, uh, upcoming year.
Yeah.
Right?
So Peter, I mean, do we wanna just touch upon those revenue generating expenses just briefly? I know we don't have high, high hopes for them, but we do... So, with the EMT basic ambulance that we currently operate, um, there are some revenue generating expenses, um, that the townspeople get back when you pay for those services. So for any, every ambulance service that you provide, um, either Medicaid, Medicare will pick up a portion of the ride or it's billed back, um, to the health insurance or to the patient. So there are some billables and, um, I think, uh, historical, um, practice, was to use some of that cash to balance the budget in prior times, long before me.
Receipts.
Yeah, so there are some billables that the fire department is working on and, uh, right now, uh, adjusting and correcting to, to kinda bring up. But you really can't have those services unless you make the initial investment. So it's a necessary evil, uh, that's why I said it's really a, a revenue generating expense. So there is revenue on the backside that comes back to the townspeople.
How much, how much revenue do you get back from that, do you know?
So on an EMT basic, what's it about, uh, fifteen hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Fifteen hundred dollars?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yeah.
So, so for every EMT basic ambulance ride is sixteen hundred dollars returned back to the town.
Every ride?
Mm-hmm. Unless it's Medicaid, Medicare, and then there are some stipulations.
Okay. So this is, um...
And so just for a little, a little clarification. So we did find that there are two hundred and thirty-eight thousand in collections right now through CompTron.
Right.
That we're in the process of collecting. Um, some of those are aged. We'll be lucky to get a third to a half, I think, at this point, but we are trying to bring that back to the town.
Mm-hmm.
And then...
Has that been worked on yet?
Yes, yep.
Have you, have you...
We started the process.
You just started, have you gotten anything back yet?
Um, we haven't, I haven't gotten the latest reported. Essentially, the, it was just kinda discovered, uh, last month.
Mm-hmm.
So I started the process on it. And I haven't gotten the latest, um, updated billing information from CompStar yet, which should be coming any day now.
But you understand, so ambulance fees,
Yep.
fifty percent go to the general fund. It's included in the revenue, that miscellaneous revenue, the seven-seventy-seven you showed in one of those earlier slides. So we, we project what it's gonna be. And we saw that there was an uptick, which created some of the, it was some of the contribution to the, the big free cash number we're dealing with. Because we had projected, I think, thirty-five, and it came in at fifty grand, which is half of the amount that goes to the general fund. The other half goes into the Public Safety Stabilization Fund, automatically, by way of a, you know, a warrant article was voted on years past that set that up.
Mm-hmm.
So whatever's collected on this outstanding two hundred and forty grand, half of that will go to the general fund, half will go into the Public Safety Stabilization Fund.
Right.
They're more optimistic about the value of that two forty than I am.
We're hoping half.
But, but there's, but there's money there that, that, that's right, that could be had.
Could be a third, it could be a half, but I mean, there is some outstanding, uh, deliverables back to the town. Right.
So just explain to me again how this changes the ambulance availability.
Well, we have to provide the service. And if we don't have the money to provide the service to seed the budget, uh, we'll, we won't get the deliverables back on the back end. It's a necessary evil. We, we have to have the fire department, we have to have some services. So, I mean, the basic necessity is to have at least one ambulance, which requires two staff members. EMT basic requires a, a firefighter to operate the truck and an EMT to, to tend to the patient. That's just EMT basic. There are a lot of ALS calls that we can't provide right now, but baby steps, we're just trying to maintain services right now and then hopefully grow into the future.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I'll touch upon this briefly, fiscal year twenty-six. We're hoping to seed the budget by about two, two hundred and fifty thousand with an understanding that there's deliverables coming back in through billings. We are adjusting the billings so that we can recruit more money from customers, if that makes any sense to you.
Mm-hmm.
That would then give us basically twenty-four-seven coverage for an EMT basic ambulance to, to be at least staffed for one ambulance per shift.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, just a little bit of context here. So a fire truck, um, would require three staff members, minimum of three. State guidelines are four. But we would at least have two full-time in the station at given time to operate a piece of equipment. One more would give us a fire truck at, at the bare minimum. That's, that's not a lot, just to even provide one ambulance in a shift. So, we're trying to just grow that, the twenty-four-seven coverage.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
We just want FinCom to understand that there are billables on the backside that will pick up basically the tab of operating that, so...
Okay.
Historically, when it was kinda staffed, you know, the, that money was coming back in to balance the budget. So, we need to get back to that point.
So, so you're looking for...
Thirty thousand for fiscal year twenty-five.
And that's in addition to what the Board of Selectmen had already put in?
Right.
Right, so, uh, the way I would look at this, 'cause I'm gonna have to make the model changes if you all go for it, right? Then I would recommend that you go to the number he's asking for on the full-time line of one-twenty-seven-four-thirty-eight, right? That you, that you go to the part-time line of one-fourty-six-three-oh-one that they put forth in their analysis. And the balance to hit the thirty K goes to the overtime line.
Right.
Would be the way I'd recommend it. So it's, it's two, twenty, and eight, you know, plus or minus change.
Right, right.
To get to the full even thirty. And that even thirty's gonna have to come out of free cash to do that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right. And that essentially just kinda keeps the lights on, keeps us running.
Okay.
And then we'll circle back for fiscal year twenty-six as we adjust billings and come, come forward with more information.
Right.
Does anybody have any questions on the floor? Mr. Man?
Just a, a brief question, um, the two-thirty-eight, my understanding it was aged. And, um, the question I've got is, um, let's assume to Richard's point that you get back half of that. Um, what becomes with that half? And is there a way we can earmark where that half should go? Otherwise, it's coming back, and what are we doing? Are we gonna backfill what we just gave them as extra?
So, so that, that's just what Peter described, there, there's half going back into a revolving account.
The general fund, and half goes into the Public Safety Stabilization.
So that would offset the extra money we just asked for if we get that back.
Correct.
Is that fair?
That's right.
You're not getting a double hit on things.
Correct.
All right?
Correct. And that's why, as we go to look at a new model fiscal year twenty-six, we, we expand upon operations. Hopefully, we look at seeding that budget so that we can pick up the billables on the backside. And you can't provide a service if you don't pay for it, and you can't collect if you don't provide it, so...
And you also have someone now who's watching it, you know, to be able to make sure that that billable doesn't get in an extended period of time. So you collect that and turn it quickly, correct?
Uh, yeah, correct, as well as adjusting the billable rates to bring them up to current standards.
The one thing, if I may, Mr. Chan, the one thing that I like about this is, it's a plan.
It's a plan.
It's nice to have a plan.
Yep.
And I compliment the folks to put it together as a plan. So, I, I'm all in favor of it.
Thank you.
Because it's a plan.
Any other questions?
Good, so just for clarification, so that would bring line item one-ninety-eight from three hundred and seventy-four as budgeted, seven-seventeen, to four hundred and four, seven-seventeen.
That's right.
And adjustingly, the grand total also, right?
So that would increase the deficit by thirty thousand as well to, from two-eighteen.
Yes.
And the grand total, correct, yep.
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 Do you have any questions?
No.
For them?
No.
Any questions? Yeah, I like that it's a plan.
I think the important thing is understand that as we try to grow the fire department model, there is a return on investment going forward. So ideally, we'd like to move towards ALS to expand services to the, to the townsfolk, especially where we have a growing, uh, elderly population here. We wanna make sure that they're accounted for and that services are readily available.
Yep.
Um, but there is a return on investment to the taxpayer, so...
Yes.
Okay. So are we...
What's the proceeding?
Hmm?
Yeah, what, what's that?
What's the proceeding?
So I would, I would be looking for a motion to increase, um, line number one-ninety-eight by thirty thousand dollars. Which would be coming from free cash.
Yeah, so I've, I make a motion, so it impacts line items one-sixty-nine, one-seventy, one-seventy-one.
Yep.
In the order of five thousand, twenty thousand, five thousand, to total thirty thousand, adding up to one-ninety-eight to four hundred four-seven-seventeen. So I make a motion to change that.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
I'll call for the vote, any questions? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So you, okay.
So, yeah, I'll make those changes and any others you happen to make today. 'Cause the byproduct of this is going to be the same thing, but the column's gonna say two-twenty-five, FinCom recommend, and the amounts that you all have accepted here.
Correct. Yep.
Good.
Okay, so line one...
But we still show the department requests. So it's this, as you see it, it's just changing the title.
We're changing...
To pure FinCom, 'cause you're the motioners at town meeting.
So it increases that, and then... Okay. All right. Okay. So, building, building and zoning enforcement, fifty-two thousand one-eighty. Civil defense, eight hundred and fifty. Animal control, fifteen thousand. Tree warden, thirteen thousand five hundred. Public safety communications, ninety-nine thousand two hundred. MES ground maintenance, thirty thousand dollars. Okay? Yep, if you wanna come up. Hello?
So, Jennifer Gill. I'm the Chair of the Board of Selectmen and Vice Chair of the Capital Planning Committee. So, um, oh, I just lost my page, there we go. So right now, in MES water operations, we have thirty thousand dollars budgeted. We need a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to really cover the costs of MES water operations. So I would like to see that increased, um, to the a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So I would like to see that increased, um, to the a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. I can, do you wanna hear the, I've recently, I've changed my position on this. I can tell you about that. So if you look at the regional agreement, it states that anything under twenty-five thousand dollars is considered an operational cost and that is, goes back to the school district. So I did not contest that position when I was first on the board of selectmen. I went with that position. However, since then, I feel that as a community, we should provide, we should be covering the cost of drinking water to the students there. Um, I've used the example of Oliver a few times, please sir, may I have some more? And sir, can I just have a cup of water? And we're like, no. So that doesn't, I understand from maybe a legal perspective, it's not required. But from a, the kind of community we wanna have or the kind of person we wanna be, I think that we should be covering that. So, and we have been covering it as of late. So that's my position.
Okay. Does anybody else have any thing to add?
Can I just add? I know I'm not in residence, but your neighboring partner and community has also taken us in approach over the years with the water, the elementary.
Okay. So, is there any other questions for me or? And we are working on just, our lawyers are working on a side letter also to send to the, that, you know, we're gonna be, this will be the exception to the agreement. So there will be a legal document. It's just not done yet. Nothing moves fast with lawyers, just so you know. You heard it here first. Okay.
No further discussion.
No further questions from anybody on the floor? Peter, can you talk on the article?
So the article just, uh, puts the opportunity for the voters who approve the regional agreement to approve this expenditure. And by putting it into the budget, you would then take no action on that article. Right? But the regional agreement, the, you know, the explanation on that article's pretty clear. The wording of the regional agreement and the lease agreement's pretty clear. So it, there is no exception provided for water operations, uh, as, and so that, and the voters were the ones who approved the regional agreement back in twenty-twenty. So that's why that article was put on there. The Boris Selectman had a mixed vote on that one.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, what you choose to do and where you choose to put the money is, you know, up to you all.
Yep. Do you have any questions?
No, I haven't.
No? Hi.
I just, I just wanna make a comment about
Sure.
supply of water, this whole clean, keep water clean, um, Roland Barrett, fifty-two Fisher Street. So, um, I'm in favor of, of supporting that water expenditure. We all have children, grandchildren, nieces, nephews or whatnot, friends that are in the school. Whether they're working there or whether they're there to learn. And, um, you wouldn't put sub, subpar fluids in your refrigerator at home or run them through your tap. So I would think this would be a wise decision to support this. So we have top quality tap water and beverages at the school for the kids as well as when they're at home.
Mm-hmm.
And so.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay. So.
Good.
Um, do you have any comments or?
Yeah, one, one basic comment. So the, um, you can distinguish between wants and needs. And, um, that certainly is a need for, for that sole reason I'm in support.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So I, so I'd be looking for a motion to take, um, the ni- ninety thousand dollars out of free cash and put it into line number two-fifty-four.
Um, two-five-two, right?
True.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Two-five-two, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the bottom line. Yeah, two-five-two, thank you.
Yeah, so I make a motion to increase line item two-five-two from thirty thousand to one-hundred-and-twenty thousand as requested.
Okay, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so I'll, any discussion further? If not, I'll look for the roll call. Howl gay?
I'm aye.
I'm an aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. So, two-fifty-four now, Blackstone BMR. Three million, six-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars.
Did you skip BVT?
Yep.
Oh my God, I skipped up. Sorry. Sorry, Jerry. I'm sorry. Blackstone Valley BVT, I'm sorry, three, three-hundred-and-thirteen thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven. Norfolk Agricultural Technical, two-eighty-four, two-ninety. Tri-county Vocational. Zero in there.
No students.
We don't have anybody, yeah.
Right.
That's right.
And then BMR, three million, six-hundred-and-sixty-nine, one-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars. Okay. Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh. Nice to see everybody. Uh, thank you for the time, uh, tonight to speak on behalf of the, uh, BMR FY twenty-five school budget. Um, just for our family and friends tuning in at home, very quick, high level. Uh, our budget process starts in October, end of October, early, um, November. Runs through January in terms of meeting with our own department heads, assessing needs, uh, in once. I'm glad you said that. Um, from there, we do a series of workshops, um, mainly runs through January, February. Uh, in that time period, we're waiting for the governor's numbers to be released.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and typically the last or second to last week of January, those numbers are released. So we're, we started a process in the fall, not knowing what the revenues are going to look like, uh, necessarily until late winter. And as we know, those change throughout the entire spring till the budget numbers, uh, at the state level, um, are finalized, which isn't to the end of June. Uh, with that, um, we had a joint meeting in February with the school committee, the boards of selectmen and our finance subcommittee. I know many folks around the table were there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it gave us an opportunity to share, um, all of the demands and our budget and the whole process that we used to, to develop that. This year, the demands were quite significant, uh, really on two ends. Uh, but the most significant was essentially the loss of revenue, uh, that we saw. Um, and that overall loss was about a one-point-film, four-million-dollar loss of revenue. We then, as you know, went forward, um, and restarted, uh, our school reconfiguration consolidation plan, uh, which we were, uh, very grateful for the support of the community in that. I think I saw the need and understood. Consolidating down to, uh, three buildings, uh, made a lot more sense for our, for our two towns. Uh, but with that, we ended up going through the process of, um, laying off eighteen staff total, which was just north of, I believe, one-point-three million. We also reduced our budget by about a, a million dollars in terms of, uh, resources, materials, supplies. So when our budget process started in the late fall, early winter, uh, we landed just north of thirty million dollars in terms of all of the things that we needed and all the demands that we had as far as utilities, health insurance, contracts, transportation, special education costs, et cetera. Um, we took a significant amount of time and brought that down, uh, because we knew that number was far too high, but brought that down by about two-and-a-half million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um, again, I want to preface all of this with, we still have a loss of revenue of about one-point-four million. So we're trying to bring the costs down and absorb as much as we can the loss of revenue. So add to that, Millville, uh, then saw an increase, their minimum local contribution of a hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars from the state. So it's what is required of Millville to pay the regional school system. Um, so all that being said, um, we were able to get our budget for FY twenty-five, actually about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars less than FY twenty-four. So our budget's actually coming in lower. The reason that the assessment is higher is because we've also lost that revenue. Um, and so I just wanna make sure that everybody at home understands that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that we were dealing with pressure on both ends.
Yeah, that was a good piece.
Uh, with that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the board of selectmen recently recommended a budget reduction for the regional school system of about a hundred and, I believe, six thousand dollars. Um, it's not a hundred-and-six thousand dollars to the school system. That ends up being four-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars to the school system. To get Millville's reduction to a hundred-and-six thousand, we then have to reduce Blackstone accordingly by the seventy-five percent, which brings the total to four-hundred-and-twenty, just a little south of four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, that equates to seven more teachers, seven more positions. Uh, we looked at that. We looked at what would the scenario be if we had to do that? Uh, and that would bring our grades two through seven and about classes of thirty. I can't do that. I can't do that to the students. I can't do that to the staff and I can't do that to our communities and I don't think the community wants to do that. Um, so I would, I would, um, respectfully request that the finance, uh, committee, recommend the budget that the school department worked about seven months on, uh, and bring forward to the community.
Mm-hmm. So I feel that you did significant cuts, you know, and I know that we take a hit with the state, you know, funding. Um, and it's tough, right? So that's how I feel too. So I don't, I don't know if anybody else wants to, has any questions or wants to add to this? Mr. Barrett?
Roland Barrett, fifty-two Fisher Street. Um, I also support this, this, uh, article to, uh, increase this up to what the school was recommending. As Dr. DeFalco said, I saw it back in February at the presentation when I was on the selectman and he's made, him and the board and the, and the accounting has made significant cuts, uh, layoffs. And in my eyes, reviewing everything and I looked at it all again over the weekend. And, um, it's, the next step is gonna be detrimental to the kids. Um, and as Dr. DeFalco said, we can't, we can't do that. Um, as much as it hurts, just like public safety, it's, you know, it's not a want, it's a need, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So. That's, you know, my, I personally support it. Anybody can vote any other way they want on the town meeting floor, but I'm just putting my piece now. And, uh, hopefully everyone's listening and, uh, if need be, I'll open my big mouth again at the town meeting. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Roland and I have been around a little while and we've, and, and as selectmen and, and we've always been told, I think this is maybe the first time that the school budget is actually less than the year before, you know, and, and, and how the towns' assessments have, we were told year over year, the town's gonna pick up more and more and this is really like in black and white, like total budget is less than, the revenues are less than. And so it's, you know, more and more on the back of the communities, which is unfortunately unfair, but the position that, I mean, the, the superintendent, the administration and the school committee pretty much scraped everything.
Mm-hmm.
One, one more quick thing. Uh, when the board of selectmen back at the beginning of the budget season put out the, you know, rec, you know, we, we asked everybody to stay within their three percent as close as they can. The school put a real valid effort to do it and, um, no fault of theirs, the state funding revenue kinda fell short, shorter than we thought. And, um, that's what put them up a little higher than they were, they were really doing, working hard to get close to that three percent.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I agree. Okay, so I, I do wanna, you said that it was changed by a hundred-and-six thousand? I have a hundred-and-one thousand, four-oh-nine.
Correct, from what they submitted. He's looking at the change from prior year. That's all. It's a hundred-and-one thousand.
A hundred-and-one, four-oh-nine.
The department request column, that's the number you would want, which includes, just, just as you all remember, includes, uh, the OPEB in the department total. It includes the town's contribution to OPEB for BMR.
Okay. So I don't know, do you have questions? Um, Howl gay, a C.
No, a comment. So I, oh, please.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, Jerry.
What I've heard is the reasoning and rationale as to why, um, the monies are needed and indeed, um, spoken to by Roland. Um, there was a, an understanding that a hundred-and-one thousand dollars was to be cut, was recommendation from the board of selectmen, the head crack thing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they spent, from what I heard Dr. DeFalco say, from October forward, studying the ins and outs of the entire budget.
Mm-hmm.
Um, could someone speak to where the hundred-and-one thousand dollars came from as a reduction? Um, if indeed, I would like to understand, where did you come up with, how'd you come up with that number? What did you find in the budget that you had from the BMR that actually allowed us to look at it as a hundred-and-one thousand dollar reduction? I think it's a fair question.
It's the board of selectmen's budget, not FinCom's.
Yep.
I was saving that for another venue.
All right. I'm just curious.
So, but not, I think it was, they brought it down to guidance.
Yeah.
They brought it down to guidance, the board of selectmen.
Right, but you have to have some understanding of what you're doing. If you're looking at a budget, what is it precipitated that they have a reduction? These folks spent six months finding out every way they could from middle to get to a certain point. And I applaud them for doing that and I know how much work that is, how many hours you have to spend on it. I just wanna understand, okay, tell me what precipitated the hundred-and-one thousand dollars? What elements went into that that allowed that to be dropped other than just a, a number? What, what went into it? Cause these folks spent a lot of time looking at it.
I, I can't answer that, but, but I'm sure.
It's not ours, yeah, so.
Jennifer can?
Yeah, I can answer it.
Thank you, Jennifer.
You're welcome. Um, yeah, so we just took the number down to guidance, Jerry. Like we are so, although I'm very supportive of, um, the increases that we've had so far. Like we're looking at a four-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. So we're looking at a, a significant override. So when we go over on any of these line items more than guidance, and this is the biggest number on our budget. So when they go over by guidance, you know, two percent of three or almost four million dollars is way different than ten percent on forty grand. So we have to be like, look, this is your number. I mean, so we're gonna do this this year? So to be honest, this was my plan, I'll have you remember. So my plan A on the budget was let's just float, we have plenty of free cash. And then we'll do, look at an override. And if we get the override, great. If we don't, like, we're gonna come back to the school next year and it's, it's gonna look very scary. And so to kind of prepare for, I don't know that an override's gonna pass. And we're trying to manage a significant deficit. And a sign, a significant, going over guidance on almost four million dollars is way more money than going over guidance on forty thousand dollars.
But if I could, when you're talking override, you're talking next year.
Next year, yeah, no, this year we can't do it.
Because we have a
There's no time.
He- healthy free cash.
Yes.
But it bakes in a deficit for next year.
Four hundred thousand dollars.
Right off the bat.
Right off the bat. Yeah, so we're looking at at least four hundred thousand dollars in an override and then prices don't seem to be going down on anything. So like that's where it is. So this was not like, this was just trying to rein things in, um, and that's it. Rein-ing in the spend.
Can, can I just add one piece? And I, and I definitely understand what you're saying about the school district being the biggest part of the budget. My sense is that it always has been and that it always will be, right? Like, cause we're educating all of the children in our town. So, um, it should be, as far as I'm concerned, right? We have over four hundred students from Millville that we're educating and, and about, uh, eleven hundred students from Blackstone. And so at the end of the day, we're responsible for the education of fifteen hundred children. Actually, it's more than that. But I say that only to note that it should, it should be the most expensive thing cause we're actually investing in the, what will be the future of our, of our community. And it's every municipality, the biggest piece of their budget is their school system.
Yeah, I just, I don't know that every municipality struggles like Millville does to close the budget. I, I don't know that they do.
And to that point, we, we
It's gonna be a real struggle.
I completely get that. And I, Jennifer, I really do, like, we really respect that and have tried everything we could. When we started this process, we, we were at like twenty percent increase. And we were looking at, how do we close a building? Like, how do we work with the regional agreement? How do we get that done? And through collaboration, we're able to do that, which was, which was tremendous. Um, so I, I do want all of you in the room to know, and I want everyone listening at home to know, we truly, truly understand and try everything we can every year to keep that assessment as low as possible. One year, we had the chair of the finance subcommittee, uh, finance committee actually say to us in this meeting, thank you for helping us keep the lights on, literally.
Yeah.
We were able to have streetlights because, yeah.
My experience working with Dr. DeFalco, they work very hard.
We have tried.
He's been very sharp with his pencils, but this is, you know, it's the reality. And he's been forewarning for two years now that this was coming, and that, you know, next year's probably not gonna be any better.
It's the minimum local contribution, I know it's a different, we have a different.
A different view of it, yes, how you split up the.
It's another, it's another, it's another piece.
It hurts Blackstone more than it hurts us, this.
Reminding us of that. Quiet about that.
Yeah, so I guess that's, that's the only thing, it was to kind of stick, stick with guidance, keep the numbers reined in, because next year is going to be very scary. And so, like, we're gonna have to put forth an override. I hope the voters vote that we are, because we have to do that special town meeting, and I hope that they support that to go to voters, so the voters can at least be heard on it. But there's no even guarantee of that. It's a special town meeting, if they vote no override, then it doesn't even go to the voters to be voted on. So, it's a very, I'm already worried about next year, that's how I feel. Like, I'm really already worried about next year's budget. This year, we were very lucky, and that's not gonna happen again. We're not gonna have over $700,000 in free cash next year. So, yeah, so that, it was just to try to manage the budget, that's it. Manage the number.
Thank you.
That's that.
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome.
I'll just say, we are your primary educational facility, and we always do the best we can. And we are probably the most affordable, pound for pound, dollar for dollar, with the students. If you look at the other costs, and we've been successfully doing this with our neighbors for 54, 55 years now. We'd like that to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions.
So, are there any further questions? Anybody wanna ask or add?
Good, yeah, just a comment from me. It is quite clear that you have spent a lot of valid time assessing this, probably more into this one budget item validly so than any other combined. You have made very painful cuts, 18 FTE, that is, that is not lightly taken. Budget is even less than last year. So, given all these factors, it's still a need-based approach, and that is the need, unquestionable. Acknowledging the budget for next year, but we don't know all factors yet. So, I'm in favor of not sacrificing the future this year, while we don't have to yet. And next year, we'll have probably the same question again, and we may need to do more painful budget cuts, but we also, even then, will have to find a solution. Need-based approach, that is my opinion.
Yeah, I agree with your opinion. Do you have anything to say?
No.
So, so, are we looking for a motion?
For clarification, what is the actual dollar amount we're going to have to increase? The line of.
106 or 101?
101,490. Sorry, 409.
Just, you're gonna change the number to 3744876, on line 265. Correct?
You can make a motion to recommend the departmental request.
There you go, simple as that.
Of 377057.
Yeah. And I think that's the right number.
The total I have is 101,409.
Is the increase, yeah.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, yeah, just, so it's under, so, 267, right? Yeah. Or 265.
265, correct, line 265.
Yeah, so I make a motion to increase line item 265 by an additional 101,409,000.
Yep.
A second.
Yep.
According to the budget sheet that we have, that does not give you to the requested amount. I'm showing a 106, 120.
No, that's a change, year to year.
That's a change from 2004?
Thank you so much for the clarification, so keep proceeding. Sorry.
What's the total request? Is it the three?
I made the motion, you accepted the motion?
With the open.
No questions on my end, right now? So, I make a vote.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Yes, you got your number, 30 on our.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Keefe Tech, $0. Highway Department, $11,488.
Right.
Wrong, we're looking at the wrong column.
Wrong column.
Wrong column. Highway, Highway Department, 190, 1,000, 194,317. Highway Snow and Ice Removal, $80,000. Townwide Fuel, $36,000. Highway Street Sweeping, $21,000. Stormwater Management, $35,500. Public Street Lighting, $22,000. Board of Health, $36,592. Council on Aging, $60,300. Veteran Services, $11,500. And I'm gonna hold that line. The reason why I'm going to hold that line is because, to me, it's principle. All the boards in the town, not all of the boards, but the majority of the boards are not getting stipends in the town, and I know, I believe the Board of Health had asked and wasn't able to get it. Am I saying that right? And this has been going on for several years, so, to me, I feel that that stipend shouldn't go through, and it should, it should be held. So, I'm looking for, I don't know if anybody has any questions? If not, I'm, I'm looking for a motion to remove the stipend from line 338. I don't know if you have any questions?
In other words, you're removing 333.
Oh, my line, oh my god, yes. I keep doing that, I keep going to the bottom line, yeah. I'm sorry, line 333. So, we would actually be adding it, we'd be adding $1,000 back in. But, that was, that was my reasoning.
That's almost offsetting the 101.
Yeah. It's about principle.
Nonetheless, I, yeah.
I, yeah.
For consistency, I make a motion to remove line item 333 and reduce it to zero.
I have a second.
Okay.
I just took it from this.
So, I look for the vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye, sorry.
So, we'll put that back in. Okay. So, now, Library, $51,540. Recreation, $3,000. Memorial Park, $1,000. Memorial Day Celebration, $500.
Historical Commission.
I think you have to say 366, too.
Historical Commission, $675, $675. Debt Service, $230,656. Regional Retirement, $228,349. Unemployment Insurance, $3,000. Health Insurance Fringe Benefits, $146,000. Dental Insurance Plan, $5,400. Medical Fringe Benefits, $20,600. Other Insurance, $130,000. And the grand total is going to change. Okay?
So, you, you haven't voted on all the not-held items.
Oh.
Which you should, you can do all in one fell swoop.
Yes.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. Alright, so, I'd be looking to, I'd be looking for a motion for all the unheld items.
I'll make a motion to proceed with all unheld items as is.
My second.
Okay, looking for the vote, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Alright.
Is it too much to ask to get a balance on that budget, or is that kind of a later date?
It'll come at a later date, but they, we, you know, we'll put that in the thing.
Got it, thank you. Well, you're gonna need that though for the, for the deficit, right? For free cash.
Free cash, I need to, we need to figure out now.
That'll be the motion, because there could, there's still the possibility of tweaks between now and town meeting, right? Something could surface. And the motion will cover all of that that's actually made then. And you would have to revote should something change, that town meeting.
I see.
Right? I don't know of anything. Well, I know one thing, but I'm gonna let it slide, but.
Okay.
It's not material.
So.
But so. So, unless you wanna calculate it, I'm not gonna pull out my phone calculator. I'm not a good calculator.
Okay.
I'm a calculating person.
So, we can calculate and give that number later?
No, but.
Right?
We increased the school by 100 minus 1, plus 30, plus.
That's right.
Wait a minute.
Plus 90, so we have 210.
Wait a minute, 7, 5, 6, 8, 868. We're increasing the school by 101,409, right?
You have about $218,000 of free cash remaining, because you've, you're just ballparking.
Mm-hmm.
And so, my recommendation, like, I always recommend that you keep some aside, you don't suck it all up.
Yep.
So that a nice number to put into the general stabilization, based on what I've seen here, would be about 175 grand, 180 grand, somewhere in that range, right? And that leaves you a little cushion of free cash of 30,000 or so, should something surface between now and when the assessors do their thing with setting the tax rate.
Right, so, we're doing a grand total of the budget, right, right now? Is that what you're looking for, Jackie?
Yeah.
So, 7,568, 868, right? We're adding 101.
Yep.
7, 5. Right? We're adding 90. We're subtracting 1,000. And adding 30, Sophia, right?
Yes.
You guys with me on this?
Yeah.
So, we're adding the 101,409. We're deducting the 1,000, we're adding the 90,000.
Yep.
And we're adding the 30,000. Correct?
Yep.
Correct.
So, that gives us a total of 7,729,277.
Is that what you got?
Yep. Is that what you got? Okay.
No, we also added, what? We added 90, 130. That's, that alone is 221. Minus the 1,000 should be 220 and change, and the change was 400 and something.
What are you, are you lost?
We're looking at the, the.
We're adding $220,000 to the budget. 90, 100, 190, and 30.
Right.
And 30 more, that's max 220.
221,49.
Yeah, minus 1,000.
Minus the 1.
Minus 220.
We're adding 220,409.
Yeah.
That's right. So, 220.
With that, we should be at 7, 7, 8, 9, and change.
That's what I got, 7. 89,277.
7, 7, 9.
89.
7, 7, 8, 9.
So, the more important number is the 438 deficit, right? And the voters don't vote, only to vote on the department totals, they don't vote on the total.
But for finance.
Because it's so much money.
Public hearing, I would argue the public should have that number.
That's fine.
So, the to, so, the total number, the total, grand total, line 391, would be
Say that again, 7, 7, 89, 277?
Yep.
Okay. Good. Yeah?
Deficit. There are you.
30, 90.
Right, and then we're gonna take out free cash for the, the other article.
438. Yeah.
That is, that is.
Deficit at 373, 236?
That doesn't sound right.
Doesn't sound right at all, I think it's a.
So, we're adding to the deficit, right? 30,000?
Right.
Right?
90.
It's 218, 327, 47. We're adding 30, plus the 30.
Plus 101, change, less 1.
Plus the 90, plus the 101,409, right?
Yeah.
Is 439, 736, 47.
Less 1,000 for the.
Yeah, 220.
What did you say?
We just add 220, plus change.
No, I know, but we're trying to get to the deficit, how gay, right? So, the 439, 736, like you said, you add the 1,000, right, Peter?
You said, you reduce the deficit by the 1,000 since you removed it from the budget.
438.
So, it's 4.
Oh, my god.
438. 438.
Fourth, so the deficit, so the final deficit number is $438,736.41. Alright. This is the balancing balance. Okay, so now we have to go back to. So, so, Peter, do we go back to?
So, the Capitol Committee would wanna vote to take no action on Article 16. I recommend, I would ask for a vote to recommend no action on Article 16, and I'll, if we all vote in that case, I'll indicate no action under our recommendation. And you might wanna use the same approach, because there's, there's not gonna be any action taken on Article 16, since you've put the 90 in the budget.
Okay.
Alright, so, I could have my committee do that, if there's a motion to take no action on Article 16. Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. So, we're all good on that, right?
So, we're at Article 16 now, so, I'd be looking for a recommendation to take no action on Article 16, because we put it back in.
Yeah.
So, I look.
Just include it in the budget, so I make a recommendation not to make, make a motion not to make a recommendation on Article 16.
I second.
Okay, all in favor? It's an aye for me? Alright, so we're, then we can, we have to go back to Article 10, correct, Peter?
I don't know, I mean, I, I've already written down, you've already voted for it, because you went through the whole darn thing.
We voted on all non.
All the line items.
Itemized changes.
Yeah, you voted on all the changes, and then you voted in all the non-changes.
Correct, so, I don't need to go to Article 10 and.
You could as a formality, just to cover all bases, should anybody cry foul.
For a motion to recommend, Article 10.
Good, so, yeah, then, I make a motion to recommend Article 10, including the just agreed-on changes.
So, based on the recommendations that we just walked through, right? Okay.
Hold on.
I second.
Aye for me.
It's an aye for me?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. So, the one last thing would be
8? Do we have to go back to 8?
Stabilization.
Yes.
General stabilization.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be, we're gonna take the free cash.
So, we pulled away
Peter, I got 373 for the deficit, what did you want to get?
438, 736, 41.
So, it's 218
Yep.
Plus 90
Yep.
Plus 101, less 1 for veterans, so really 100. Plus 30 for the fire department's additional.
So, that does count, that works, so I was looking at this, Peter? So, our revenues are 7.4-ish million total receipts, so if you do the 7, whatever it was, the final minus the 7.4, I get 373. But if you're all comfortable with the 400, whatever, then I will go with that. I just
Well
Yeah. Maybe mine's older.
Peter, I'm looking at this paper?
Yeah, so, all you're really changing is the deficit number of 218.
So, the total receipts, so that's, if you take the 7, your 7, your big number, the 7, no, so that stays the same, those are receipts.
Oh, okay.
That doesn't change, what's your big number down here? The 7, what did this increase to?
No, so that, so that, no, 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 no. So, what happens is, you're looking for that number down here.
7513.
Yeah.
Got it, okay, sorry. Nope, okay, we're clear. I'm sorry for causing that root interruption.
That's okay.
So, it's the funky model.
See now.
Funky model mechanics. So
So, we'd have to take this.
So, so, so if you did 750, less 218, or, or less, if you just do, less, 750 less the 438, right? Less the 45 that you did for snow, uh, for, uh, highway, less the 48 for, uh, snow and ice. Leaves you, I think, 2, 218K. My earlier numbers were right. Which they could be not. Are you with me? Minus 4, 5, minus 4, 8. It's me, 219, okay? And available free cash.
What do you have?
219. I'm just starting with 750, it's really slightly less, but just ballpark.
I have 216, 61881.
Yep.
Okay, so you have a more precise number.
Yeah.
So, 216, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I would say, if you did 175, that leaves you 40 in free cash, roughly.
4161881.
Right? That's a, that's a nice little free cash cushion.
You can round numbers, right?
Yeah.
That's okay to do. 216618. My, you're saying keep 41600, right?
Yeah, so just put a nice, nice number in the stabilization of 175,000.
I'm like, oh, that's okay.
Versus 180, you know?
So, 175, and then that would leave us, that'll leave us the cushion.
Yeah.
So, that's my recommendation. Right?
Right. So, I would ask our capital committee to do that.
Okay.
Okay? And that will help you guys, all right?
That's on general stabilization now, right? So, I'm going to move
So, I'm gonna do it first.
Make a motion, you're making a motion.
Yeah, so, capital committee.
Capital Committee?
Capital Committee. So, I'm gonna ask for a motion to put $175,000 of free cash into general stabilization fund. Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye, so, 5-0 on that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Good job, capital. You guys are awesome.
Finance Committee, I'm gonna look for a motion.
Yeah, so I make a motion
Yeah.
I make a motion to also move $175,000 of free cash into general stabilization.
Okay.
On Article 8.
I'll second.
Aye?
Aye?
Aye.
Aleg is doubly important.